Madame Mary, go ahead and reintroduce.
Yes, sorry, we do apologize for the technical difficulty. We do have Mary O'Leveque, Account Manager Municipal and Stakeholder Relations from MPAC, joining us this evening. Thank you, sir, for joining us.
Thank you, Madame Mary. And can you see my screen or what I'm presenting? Yes, okay. So thank you for having me here today. As you mentioned, my name is Mary LeVieque. I'm an account manager with Municipal and Stakeholder Relations at MPAC. And I work out of the Timmins office. I'd like to just take a minute and congratulate all council members on your election. And please know that we are here to help and we have a whole municipal and stakeholder relations team who can answer any questions that you may have. I'd like to kick things off today with just a video. It's a bit less than three minutes titled, "How Your Property Taxes Are Calculated Based on Your Property Assessment and What Happens When There's an Assessment Update." I'll play that now.
Property taxes are based on your home's value. What you might not know is that an increase in your home's value doesn't necessarily mean your taxes will go up. To explain, let's take a look at how your property taxes are calculated. Imagine there's a town that only has three homes and they're each worth a different amount. The total cost to provide...
Sure. Sorry.
Buy all of the town's services is $1,200. This is collected through property taxes. Each homeowner pays property taxes based on their home's assessed value. So we take the total cost of services and divide it by the total property value. This tax rate is applied to all the houses to get enough money to pay for the town's services. Each homeowner pays according to the assessed value of their home. And every four years, the houses are reassessed. Let's say all three properties have gone up equally in value. The total cost of services hasn't changed, but the total property value has increased. When this happens, there will be a decrease in the tax rate. Now, when we apply that new rate on all the homes, everyone still pays the same. Now, let's say another four years has gone by and these homes are reassessed. During this time, the house on the right gains more market value than the other two. The total value of all the homes have increased, which means the town has to calculate a new tax rate. With this new tax rate, the first two homes will actually pay less than the home on the right that was reassessed at a higher value. Since the cost of services hasn't changed, the town doesn't need to collect more property taxes on the whole. However, since property taxes are based on a home's value, taxes for each individual home could potentially go up or down based on the rest of the homes. So what happens when the cost to provide services goes up? Well, it means more property taxes need to be collected from every home and a new tax rate is calculated. To get the new rate, we take that amount that the town now needs and divide it by all of the property values. The new rate is applied to all the homes and now everyone has to pay the new tax amount to continue to fund the town's services. So let's review. One, property taxes are based on the assessed value of a home. If all assessments go up equally, everyone pays the same. Two, if all assessments do not go up equally, there's a redistribution of the tax. Three, if the town's cost to provide services increases, the municipality may choose to increase the tax rate. When this happens, everyone pays their share of that increase. And that explains the relationship between property value and property taxes.
So this video is just one part of our strategy campaign to help educate the property owner on the relationship between property assessment and taxation and when an assessment update occurs. It could be located on our MPAC website, but it was also shared with the municipal through a municipal toolkit we had provided to municipalities last year and it's really just to help municipalities mitigate those misinformation and provide support and resources to educate and inform the property owner as we have been, MPAC has been doing for the last few months through our websites and social media. So what is MPAC? You know, we see ourselves as Ontario property expert and our job is to assess and classify, you know, more than 5.5 million properties across Ontario, which is a combined value of more than $3 trillion. In the past, in the past year, Ontario has grown by approximately 100,000 new properties. And in 2022, we added more than $37 billion on the Ontario Assessment Rule, which includes approximately $497 million here in northeastern Ontario. We know every municipality will use our assessment to make some informed decisions about their community, but most importantly, to help them distribute their property taxes. And in the Ontario Property Tax System and these assessments, that will generate approximately $30 billion in tax revenue annually. So just to put this into context, there are four key players in the Ontario Property Assessment and Taxation System and they all have different roles and interests in the process. Starting with the provincial government, specifically the Minister of Finance is responsible for setting assessment and taxation legislation, as well as your policies. They will determine the education property tax rate. But they also oversee an independent body that adjudicates appeals of MPAC's assessed value. And we know them as the Assessment Review Board or short for ARB. MPAC is an independent, non-for-profit corporation. We're funded by all Ontario municipalities and our role is to accurately assess and classify all properties in Ontario. And we do this in the compliance with the Assessment Act, MPAC Act, and other regulations set by the province. Municipalities will determine their budget requirements, set their tax rate, collect property taxes to pay for municipal services such as your police, fire, road, recreation, and among other things. And that's done through the compliance of your municipal act and many other regulations set by the province. Also through this role, municipalities will use MPAC's assessment and establish their tax rate to distribute their tax requirements to the ratepayer. And finally, we have the property owner who will pay the property tax bill. But they also set market value through ongoing property purchases and sales. So for property assessment, for us, monitoring the market and assessing newly built and renovated properties are things that we do every day to make sure that our property data stays current. But we also periodically update every single property assessment in Ontario based on the same legislated valuation date. And this is what we call the assessment update or often referred to as the reassessment. The valuation date for the most recent assessment update, which took effect in 2017, was a valuation date of January 1st, 2016. And this is when we, MPAC, determined whatever single property in Ontario could have reasonably sold for its current state and condition at a particular point in time. We know regular reassessments are important so that properties ensure that, you know, assessments stay up to date and similar properties of similar value within the same municipality pay similar property taxes. And it is the provincial legislation that determines when MPAC conducts each property-wide assessment update and set the valuation date for each updated cycle. So that is something that MPAC is currently waiting at this moment is that direction from the provincial government on when we can conduct the next assessment update. So just due to the pandemic, for those who don't know, the scheduled reassessment that was supposed to occur in 2020 was postponed by the province to provide stability and certainty to Ontarians. So as a result, property assessment continued to be based on a legislated valuation date of January 1st, 2016. And will continue to be for the 2023 taxation year. When the next assessment update is announced by the province, we will definitely have those engagements with you and have those meaningful conversations on what this means for your community and provide that support that you need. And although, you know, the assessment update remains paused, our work continues to keep our property data up to date. And MPAC really, you know, remains in a strong position to deliver the next private-wide reassessment. So while we wait for the next assessment update, we make sure to continuously update our property data so that municipal tax records are accurate so that when you're making, you know, it's important for that so that you can make your important tax decisions. And to do that, I'll just name a few, you know. We will review all property sales and monitor sale trends for Kirkland Lake. We will address requests for reconsideration and appeals. We will inspect and assess new constructions, additions, renovations promptly. And that's really done through the building permit activity, which is a really important role for us. It really helps us identify the changes that are being made on properties. It also helps us verify that information. But also in return, creates new assessment where municipalities can realize new revenue. So when an assessment update occurs, there are oftentimes misconceptions on the relationship with taxes when an assessment update occurs. So as you can see on this slide, for the property taxpayer, the calculation is quite straightforward. It is the assessment times their tax rate equals the taxes paid. As you saw in the video at the beginning of the presentation, the overall amount municipalities must collect in taxes is based on your total budget that's predetermined. MPAC's assessments, even through an assessment update, will help you distribute that amount, but they won't, they won't help you determine the taxes paid. So some of the consistent messaging that we've been using to help property owners is the most important factor is not how much your assessed value of a property has changed, but rather how the assessed value has changed relatively to the change in your class that you're in within your town, your community that you're in. So this concept was explained in that recent municipal toolkit that we provided last year, also through the video that you just saw at the beginning. And we always encourage municipalities to use this information to really help educate the owner what that means when there's an assessment update like we have been in the last few months. So thank you. It's important for us to stay connected, especially before an assessment update. If you haven't already, please make sure you subscribe to our newsletter called In Touch. You can subscribe it to our website. And our webpage also has a great library of digital resources. And please be sure, you know, to reach out to me at any time if you have any questions or you're requiring or looking for additional resources. So thanks again for having me today. And if there's any questions, always happy to answer them.
Thank you for your presentation today. I'll open the floor to questions. Any questions or comments from council? Councilor Owen?
Thank you, Madame Mary. When there's situations like we've been going through in the last year or two, where prices of housing, especially say internal area, Brampton, Oshwa, has jumped quite considerably higher than it normally would. Do you, does MPAC do a reassessment under those circumstances? Or if the opposite is true, if you're a one industry town and that industry shuts down and housing prices drop to the seller, do you do a reassessment of that town so that the taxes would, so the assessment would reflect the real property values?
So yeah. Normally, a reassessment is done every four years. So through that four year, you'd be recording every sale that is occurring and recording the market of that. And so really the biggest question would be what valuation date the province would choose? And that would really correspond based on your market. So if, you know, if you're in the middle of the cycle, maybe your industrial town, your mill maybe closes down. It would really depend again on the valuation date chosen by the province that would really determine what those assessment would be for that municipality, if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Councilor Shava?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madame Mary. I went to Wefunam last year and MPAC, you guys were there. And there were a lot of issues that were discussed. One of them is that when people build a brand new house, it takes a long time for the assessment to be done by MPAC, thereby prolonging the time it takes for them to actually pay taxes on those new homes. So based on that process, will you share anything about that with us?
Yes, definitely. So for, say, for someone who were to construct a new home, that's obviously would be done through a building permit and that is delivered to us on a monthly basis. So our service level agreement with municipalities, one of our promises through that service is to pick up any new construction 90 days within receiving an occupancy permit from your building department. I can say for 2022, for example, we have met that service level agreement with municipalities. But so say you were constructed within, you know, maybe you're done complete constructing your home in March, we would have up to 90 days to arrive on site and make an inspection to add it to your assessment rule. Now depending by the time it is keyed by our property inspector and delivered to the municipalities, it can sometimes add maybe an additional month to that.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, thanks again, Madame Mary. This question is kind of relevant to Kirkland Lake because we are surrounded by unincorporated territories. How do you track the building in unincorporated territories? And the reason I ask that question is because people that live there, they don't need a building permit. And they know they can get away with putting a second building on or a second house, whereas if they were in the town of Kirkland Lake, they would need a building permit. So how does MPAC track that development outside the organized areas?
Great question. For the unincorporated townships, it's a bit more challenging for MPAC for a few reasons. That's correct. There's not a requirement for a building permit for property owners who are constructing there. We are seeing more and more unincorporated being part of local road boards now. And so a lot of more boards are requiring or requesting more MPAC to make inspections. But with all honesty, municipalities is always going to be a priority to MPAC as far as the levy goes, et cetera. So we're more prioritized with those. We are in looking at different scenarios or different ways of how to track property owners that are constructing within, without, outside of your border, whether that is through the electrical safety, because we know that people are constructing new homes, they need to get a permit with them to construct a home. So we're looking at different avenues on how to track that. We are also doing reinspection programs with them when we have the time to. But it's, we have a lot of them. And so we focus on the municipalities and we will focus on that when the time permits. But we have, I would say this summer, our Timmins office has put a big focus on corporate townships through our local road boards.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is because I have property in an unincorporated township and I do see and I do know of development that's going on. And sometimes it's on private roads. So the road board doesn't come into play. And it's concerning to me because I think everybody should pay their fair share. And if they had to pay their fair share, maybe they would live in town and pay taxes in town rather than where they know they can cheat and not pay as high a tax.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a great concern and something that we're always looking to, you know. Again, if we have a large, large amount of building permits in municipalities, it's really what we focus very hard on those areas. And, you know, a lot of times what helps us in local, sorry, I say local roads board, but on corporate township, a lot of times are sales and sales really also is another great trigger for us to go out there. If we see something maybe sales much greater than the assessment and a lot of times it's because it was originally vacant land and now something was erected and that sale price really triggered. So a lot of times we're going for those. But if there are no triggers for MPAC as far as a sale or somebody doing, someone doing a request for consideration or a billing permit, it's difficult for us to know. Unless we redo a reinspection and that would be quite a work for us to do.
Have you considered using aerial photographs because they are readily available now? You don't have to rely on the M&amp;R to do them. And you can compare them year to year and then MPAC would know exactly, hey, that building's there this year, but it wasn't there last year. And that seems to me to be a pretty easy solution or at least partial solution for the product.
Yeah, that is another thing that MPAC is looking at it oftentimes. We're trying to work with partners to get better digital imagery through satellite. There's some areas it's very difficult for us to capture. But again, that is another tool that we've been continuously visiting and making it more as a practice for those areas.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to put you through the wringer there. It's just...
No, no, that's good. That's a good question.
I see these happening and I'm sitting on a town council and I know the people will live out there. First off, their base taxes are lower because they don't get the services. But secondly, they know they can expand and not get caught. Thirdly, they know unless they're going to put it, if they're not going to put insurance on it, they don't have to follow the building codes and they can build cheaper. That just kind of rubs me the wrong way as a town councillor.
Any further questions from council? Not noted. Thank you very much, sir, for your presence here this evening. We do appreciate receiving the education as council and for members of the public as well. So thank you for your time this evening, Mary.
Thank you, Madame Mary. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary O. Proceed. Item number 4.2. We'll proceed with the motion.
Okay, moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Patrick Riley. Being resolved at the delegation from the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation entitled MPAC Council Orientation, be received for information for...
All in favor? Asked unanimous. Item number 4.2, Ontario Clean Water Agency, 2022 Highlights, MECP Instructions, Drinking Water Quality Management Standards, 23 Planned Operations. Eric Nelson, Regional Manager for Northeastern Ontario. And Anthony Danis as well, Dunn as well.
Your work in the council. Thank you very much for having us. It's been a couple of years. It's nice to be back. So what I've done in this presentation is I've tried to sum up the last couple of years because it's been so long since we've been together. So we'll run through some of the highlights. First of all, we'll talk about the team now that's operating in the Kirkland Lake cluster. We'll talk about our 22 highlights. We'll talk a bit about this West Tico Waste Water Treatment Plant demolition and the upgrades that have come from there. And the new pump station that it's now become. And we'll talk about water, wastewater historical flows because that's an important thing. We had mentioned it a couple of weeks ago. We'll talk about the community involvement that Aqua does and our 2023 plans. And we'll talk a bit about CLI, ECA legislation. Solidated Linear Infrastructure is what the ministry is calling it now.
Which page you want?
I am on page, it's third page. There we are, yeah. So within the Kirkland Lake cluster, we have myself. Sylvie Lemieux is our Business Development Manager. Leanne Curran runs all my money and keeps me, keeps me safe. Ivan Rondo actually just left us. He was our Safety Process Compliance Manager. And Alona Bruno, who probably most of you either know or have met, she's our Process Compliance Technician. She's the one that does our annual reports. She's the one that reviews our ministry inspections. She's the one that does our DWQMS and whatnot. She's integral to our operation. We can flip the page. And then within our team, we have Anthony, who's our Senior Operations Manager. So Anthony runs this cluster, which includes surrounding towns. You know, I said it before, there's not too many managers you're going to meet who have the energy that this guy does. And he's dedicated to your town. He's dedicated to his job. Pat Roy, he's our team lead. He's been with us now since we took over operations in 2014. He was formerly a Kirkland Lake, County Kirkland Lake employee. Fantastic operator and as we talked a bit about our SCADA, this guy's the one that got us through the project. Thought much. Steve Gerald's been, he's another lead. He's been with us for a number of years. He's a graduate of the college program. Paul St. Seer, he's our local mechanic. He can fix anything. He can fix a broken heart. He's good. Dan Poplinsky, local boy, you know, recently graduated from college. He's an instrumentation tech. And then the next page, Jennifer. Brendan Jaxton, he's another instrumentation technician. He's another one. Where he's surprised that sometimes he's rather new to us, but he has a lot of, he has a lot of experience. He's another one. You can throw him into a trouble, into a problem and he'll come out shining. Sojun Lee, she's an operator mechanic. She's also graduated the program who came from overseas and decided to stick with us in Kirkland Lake. Tanner Mas, young kid, graduated of the program up in the college. He's going to stick around with us. Julie Bernatches, local kid, going to stick around with us. And Sean Recurty, who we recently picked up. So that's our team. So it's not, you're not necessarily going to see these individuals at the plant at any given time, but that's the resource that Anthony has, you know, during times. We can grab all this kind of talent to come and keep our plant running. Okay? At every presentation I do, and you can tell me if you're tired of it, I always stick this one on. It's pre-Walkerden and post-Walkerden when it comes to the legislation that has to be handled. It's massive now. Many, many, many laws, lots of reporting, lots of proof, lots of online monitoring, all these kinds of things and the acts that are coming to play and the legs and rings that have come along with the act. So hence what I had said earlier about Alona Bruno keeping us skating down the ice. Okay, Jennifer, we can switch. So 2022 highlights, talk about our ministry inspections. We'll talk about QMS and we'll talk about some of our upgrades. We can flip right away. All right. So I'm going to eat a bit of crow here. In 2020, 100%, there was a recommendation to purchase a new fluorine analyzer at the Chappie Standpipe, which we did. In 2021, we dropped to 81, 91.8. There was issues with the SCADA upgrade. Okay, so what was happening is some alarms failed to call out. And so there is two findings. When these alarms fail to call out, that's the problem, but you get hit a couple of times throughout the inspections. 2.35% off, 2.35% off. So they hit you a number of times on a couple of things. And this was during the install of the SCADA program. So we're disconnecting one SCADA that was getting sick, if we all recall, and installing a new one. So we're trying to do this to keep operations as smooth as we can. We don't want anybody in town to know that there's even something going on at the plant. But when we're disconnecting communication or reconnecting communication, there's going to be bumps. And then same thing in 2022 with our 8706. Again, there was, there was some further work with our SCADA system, okay? Now, so like I say, not proud of it, but I will say we had team members that were at that plant 24/7 for sometimes weeks on end, keeping this place going. So we're actually, you know, despite these numbers, I'm rather proud of our team for, you know, like I said, people in town didn't even know anything was going on. We continued to make water. It was strong. DWQMS, Drinking Water Quality Management Standards. So this came into play in 2010. It's an ISO-based improvement system. I believe in it and I've made sure that all of our region believes in it. I think if we're planning and doing and assessing and improving, that makes for, that makes for better operations. And so we actually stick with... And so we we actually stick with it quite a bit. Um so we discussed our inspection results. We know we had some some learning to do on there. Uh we discussed our adverse water quality indicators and corrective acts uh actions. So an A W Q I, we'll get them. It doesn't mean that all of a sudden your water is dangerous. What it means is it's an indicator that it has to be looked at. Now on these ones, typically um we'll resample, uh sample came back clean. Could have been a bottle, could have been sample error, could have been lab error, all these things. But what we do, the protocols are there to keep the public safe. So if we do get a bump, we resample right away, we notify the owners of all these kind of things. Upstream sampling, downstream sampling, just to make sure that we're safe. Okay? Um we added cybersecurity as uh as one of our risk assessment threats. Um. We had mentioned that a bit at standard of care where where it can come into play. Aqua was, we're we're pretty tight with their cybersecurity, um you know, especially with their SCADA system. So for example, when we installed this SCADA system in town, we made sure that the the integrator had cybersecurity insurance on it as well. Right? So that was a new thing that uh that that Aqua made sure all of our integrators are going to have before they were going to touch our system and make it communicate with the outside world. Okay? Um and then your worship, um you and Mr. Smith are going to endorse our newest version in twenty twenty three soon as uh soon as Alona has it has it ready to come over. Okay? Um our internal audit, so these are the ones that Alona does. Again, she she audits as well and any external audits. So if we can flip the page, Jennifer. Um we found that our merchant series bots testing, so what we did is we did a real life incident where a neighboring municipality got hit by lightning. We lost our P L C. So our P L C is a programmable logic control center. Uh it got hit by lightning. Our 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 plant lost its brains, didn't know what to do. So we responded. We were operating the plant manually. Um we got our instrumentation techs in there to replace cards and all this kind of stuff, got it going. We phoned uh Aqua I T. And they were able to sign on remotely and help us out. So again, this is this is some of the the comfort. This is the reason I can sleep at night sometimes. That I have a whole host of people I can call within my region. I have another group of people I can call within the province to help us out. Okay, so what we did is we applied that real life scenario to every one of our municipalities. So how can we improve on what happened? Are we protected from from what happened? Okay, um we're continuing to keep an eye out for har- harmful algae blooms. Municipalities, Jeff, south of us are are seeing them. So we're measuring, okay? Just want to let you know that. Um I mentioned that already. Um third party audit, uh there are some improvements we had to make with endorsement, records updating. Uh section five, there's twenty one elements. Section five of Q M S is always our records retention. Typically, and I don't think we're alone in this game, records retention, everybody can always find a way to improve. So if we can flip, Jennifer. Okay, so two thousand twenty two, we got our SCADA completed. Um it's running well. Um you know, and every time and it's still in the background, this is still going on. When Pat sees a little hiccup with the system or if he wants something improved, he gets on the horn with the integrator and the integrator makes this improvement. Okay, so um we were done in very early twenty two. We have a year's worth of these of these upgrades to make. Okay? Um we relocated our chemical tanks. Actually, Anthony, if you don't mind, you're the one that does the work, not me.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I'm gonna, I got a bit of a list. It's a little bit uh longer than this list here, but uh but yeah, switched over soy and hydroxide vault tanks. Um so that those old tanks were the the age of the plant. So those those new tanks are in there now. That'll last us probably another thirty years. Uh Swastika booster station. So we performed repairs to the flow meter. Flow meter was damaged. Uh inlet actuator for filter number two and number four, replace those guys. This this is all the water plant, by the way. Um packing replacement in the back washer turbine pump, replace packing. Uh feed pump to chlorine analyzer, replace that. Repairs made to altitude valve in the standpipe. So this this standpipe, we we went in there, assessed it. Um it was going to be about a hundred thousand dollar replacement. We were able to go and get parts and uh and just get in there and replace it with a mill rate. So we saved a significant amount of money there. Um we uh removed the standpipe from service. Uh we did that in 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 conjunction with Pedersen because a new uh new flow meter was installed uh in there for the mine. Um we did um uh compressor feeding the uh feeding the water plant valves. Uh we had that fail, so we had our mill rate go in there and we we upgraded. Uh sorry, we replaced the components in that and we didn't buy a new compressor. Um a new backup alarm dialer in the in the water plant to prevent any uh any kind of SCADA failures, I guess, just to notify folks if anything goes on. Uh Kirkland Lake sewers plant, uh blower maintenance. Uh so we found two wires that were uh that were melted in one of the uh feeds to the blower. So I I suspect it was probably like that since construction. So we we replaced that. Um HVAC replacement of uh uh we did motors in the HVAC, grit blower replacement. Um we did uh uh in Goodfish, uh we did level transmitters in the Goodfish uh lift station. So uh we replaced old um flow switches that were in there with an updated system. We did uh Hilltop uh breaker. We had a uh breaker failure failure at Hilltop, replace that. Sprockets in the old clarifier. Uh we did uh Goodfish pumping station. We did all new pipes, all stainless, new pumps, uh new saddles, entirely new uh new pump station. We did uh um uh we did uh we did the Wilson pump station also, same thing, all pipes removed. They were the age of the uh system probably since the eighties or yeah eighty four, removed all all new stainless, probably in the last forty years. Didn't go for a very long time. Uh moving on to Swastika. We work very closely with Pedersen and uh and so we've actually converted the the scum chamber at the Swastika sewage plant into a a new pumping station. So that's going to hold us over until something else can maybe be done there in the future. Um we also work very closely on the Riverside uh pump station and uh and uh we we you know, basically work with Pedersen uh to regenerate our pumps and and all different components, right? So that's uh uh about it. Many other maintenance items were done, small things that were uh that were kind of just not really worth mentioning, but but everything's done in the background there.
Good again. All all this done, our our community sleeping at night, didn't know what happened. Everything was good. So here's how we look after your assets. We pumped out two hundred and eighty six preventative work orders this year and got the note. So these are the things, you you know, changing oil, doing greasing, um or you know, manufacturer's recommendations on all our parts and our assets throughout the throughout the system. Okay, we did a hundred and four corrective or capital work orders. And we did a hundred and sixteen calls relating to alarms. So again, alarms don't mean, oh, something's definitely wrong with the system. We set an alarm at at a level that's not perfect. Oh, something's not perfect. We're going to go in and look at it before it becomes a problem. Good? So we're looking after your stuff. Uh we wanted to talk a bit about the Swastika wastewater treatment plant decommissioning project. Um all in all, went well. We went a little long. We asked for an extension and uh and they granted it to us. And this this was, you know, don't forget that we had COVID during that time. It was tough for suppliers to get parts. It was a it was a bit of a tough go, but uh but the consulting engineers and the and the construction company, you know, and in conjunction with working with the town, it worked out rather well. The good news is we now are not donating any sewage to the to Auto Lake in Swastika. It's all coming into town and it actually makes Anthony's plant in town a lot happier. Because the more bugs it can take to go to work, the happier it is. So it's a it's a win win situation. Um it will reduce long term operating costs, of course, right? Because now we eliminated all these chemicals that were going to work in swas. Um you know, the electricity used in swas, the manpower used in swas. So so it's a good thing. That's a good thing. Reduces the risk, of course, right? For the town, reduces the risk for everybody. And we all know it was a right thing to do environmentally. Right? So you know, our Kirkland Lake logo will be in the right environment. By God, that was the right thing to do. Okay, um in two thousand eighteen, I wanted to talk a bit about this uh floor reduction now and and also as as a caveat, the the town of Kirkland Lake, the distribution crew over the last few years has done a lot of work addressing I N I inflow and infiltration. And uh you know, a bit of a leak detection program going on. So it's uh you know, we know we have to, but I want to give you some numbers here and I I'm gonna, there's a couple of graphs coming up later that it, you know, takes a good look at. When we, in two thousand eighteen, our our minister inspector said, you know what? We use a lot of water on Kirkland Lake. We should probably look into this a little bit. Don't forget, every time I shove a drop of water out of the water treatment plant, we treated it with chemicals and everything else. And we had to use the power to pump it out, right? So there's no use treating it and pumping it out so that it can go into the ground somewhere, right? So whatever we could do to tighten up our system, uh certainly going to save us money in the long run. So in Kirkland, we're averaging eight hundred and ninety liters per person per day. It's a little bit high. Numbers throughout Environment Canada, they they vary, but typically they're about three hundred to six hundred liter per person per day. So we're we're getting rid of some water that that perhaps we don't want to. So you know, we should continue down the path of a conservation program. Uh you may want to consider a water meter program. Um you know, leak detection program I know is ongoing. We can work together on that. Um you know, even operation uh modifications, right? We can, you know, so I know Pat, he he'll he'll work with the pressures throughout the night, right? Use pumping out a whole bunch of pressure all night. Everybody's asleep anyways. We can reduce pressures at night. When you reduce pressure, less water comes out of your tap when you give it a twist. So now we're saving a bit of money, right? And it's and it's awareness. It's public awareness. I think if we can work together in the in the, especially during the summer months on public awareness, we don't want people out closing down their driveways and and whatnot, right? These.
Yeah, Eric, would the fact that uh contributing to the uh uh average use per person be up considerably due to running taps all winter?
That would that would really, really add up. Yeah, it's huge. Um oh, sorry, councillor. I had done a calculation uh a few years ago, but it's in the thousands. It it it's it it could be as much as a thousand cubic meters per day of people running a tap. Right? So it's huge. It's huge. All that water, all those chemicals got, just so we can go back down the drain. And then we have to treat it again. Right? So now we just, we almost doubled up our money, right? So so public awareness is a big thing. If we can get the public involved, um I love the next generation coming up. They 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 seem to think about our our environment and whatnot a lot. And and I think if we can pump that out, and you'll see in the next couple of slides, what what we're trying to do a little bit. Okay, Jennifer, we can do a flip. Okay, here we go. So this is raw water flat flow.
Sorry, Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh through you, uh your worship. Um just wondering, that number, eight hundred and ninety liters per person per day, does that include industry use and mining?
It does.
And mining use?
It does.
Yeah, so that may contribute.
It does skew it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's say our number might, it it may be eight fifty or whatever, but uh yeah, I don't have all the information and the flows going into our businesses and all this kind of stuff, but uh
Sir Gilling may use a lot of water and councillor Owen?
Yeah, I was gonna save all my comments for Eric to the last because I know he likes talking to him. And my son was water firm and he'd worked for the water department for about fifteen years. This uh water leakage from the pipes is a very big, big problem. That is where the bulk of our wasted water is going. And ever since I've been on council, I've been pushing for money to replace the pipes. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get rental grants so we can put in our money. But the bulk of our water that we're losing is through old pipes. Um every time you have a water main break, you're losing I don't know how much, but it depends on the water main break, how big it is, of course. But we could take an instance, I believe it was last winter, where there was a pressure surge and I believe we had five water main breaks uh at the same time. That's a huge amount of wasted water. And why is it a huge amount of wasted water? Because the pipes are so old that they broke in five places for one one surge. Um it's an issue we as a council have to address because we're in charge of the the water distribution. And you mentioned uh earlier about the SCADA, about the alarms. And I'm well aware of that because Brian was still living down at the time. And we were lucky on a few occasions because his uh crew was out doing their normal maintenance things or whatever they do. And they discovered, oh, there's a problem. We gotta get all over the sewage plant or the water plant, whatever. And disaster was, yes. Um so this, but hopefully this data situation's been all straightened out and and that's normal when you install new uh equipment. Um that there's going to be bugs that have to be worked out. But uh I certainly would be in favor of water uh meters in each house. Um right now I have a tap in Kirkland. Oh, I guess I shouldn't have said that at a public meeting.
Councillor Owen, sorry, do you have a question?
Um, yes, I did have a question with SCADA, which was answered. Um, how much percentage of water do you figure is going out through leakage? And how much through running houses? I mean, water from houses.
Hey, so I think there's a number of things that are going on here. We have, there's, we know there's some bleeders in town for houses. We know that the town has some bleeders that are running in locations where uh there might be a risk of freezing, for example, running into a ditch or manhole. And we also have the water mains, right? Um what percentage is going to each each location? I don't know, but I would assume probably will have half the water probably going to leakage right now. Um you mentioned, mentioned the um the pipes, you know, degrading, and this is very true. Um we're working right now, um you know, Public Works, um with with Brian and Public Works, we're working on trying to increase the pH to stop the degrade degradation of the pipes, right? You you can't replace all the pipes, but we need to stop the degradation. So that they uh so we can preserve the ones that are still in in okay condition, right? But yeah, we'll have to replace some. If we can stop the degradation, then at least moving on, we'll yeah, things status quo. Does that help? Yes, thank you.
Looking forward. I had asked councillors, just to write down your questions. We're almost through the delegation and you can ask questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's the numbers in front. Let's, um the plant is running at ninety percent efficiency. That's a good number. Okay, so that's our raw water coming in. Um then we have to treat it and all this kind of stuff. But we have back washes, they're right, and we clean our filters and all this kind of stuff. So ninety percent of the water that comes into that plant goes back out to the town. So that's a good number. The plant is it's a well-built plant. So so it's an is efficient plant. But you see our numbers that, you you know, but I can remember um I'm getting old. And so back when I was working at the town, um I was seeing numbers, honestly, there were sixty eight sixty eight hundred cubes a day or or seven thousand cubes a day. Those are my typical numbers and see how they grow, right? So and it's not, you're not due to population. So on the next slide, Jennifer, we'll see it. Now, this is interesting as well. Here's our wastewater plant close. So you see our inflow, right? Um a- as compared to what we treated. So the bottom line is it treated. So it's getting smooth and yes, we get some high times and whatnot. But if you see our inflow, look at it spike. So what that is, is I N I, inflow and infiltration. Spring melted, you know, if you, it's tough to see from here, but you all have the presentation. If you look at it closely, spring melted, heavy rains. This is when we're we're treating a lot of God's water. So you know, that's another thing we we should probably, you know, continue to concentrate on. It's a long term savings for the town. It's the right thing to do. Um we're almost done. Um just want to talk a bit about how Aqua works, uh community involvement. We have this Aqua, it's called One Water. Um so we 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 have operators that will go to the school in grade seven and eight and talk to the kids about the water treatment. Um, so we, we, we have operators that will go to the school in grade seven and eight and talk to the kids about the water treatment, wastewater treatment. And, and you know, the, you know, how important to clean water, drinking water is. Anthony and I are part of the advisory committee up at uh, up at Northern College for the, for the kids that are coming and taking the course and coming out. We've been there forever, yeah, hey man, yeah, yeah. So this, this helps to secure our future, and you know, from the, from the slide, earlier slides, I grab a lot of these kids coming out of that program. It's, they do a good job and I want to keep them low. This year I'm going to get into the high schools and, and talk to those guys a bit, because um, you know, in, in our industry, um, no matter what these kids are interested in, whether they want to drive a truck or pull a wrench or play with wires or talk to ministry officials, for whatever reason they would want to. Um, you know, we can use their talent, so, so I'm gonna go talk to some of them and see what they want to do with their future. Um, okay, here's uh bitter news coming up, we'll talk a bit about CLI ECA legislation. So now the ministry came out last year where we have to look at our storm water management, our sewer water management. Uh, it's going to mean further assessments, it's going to mean further reporting. We're going to now have annual reports on every one of our list stations, we have to do an assessment of the entire system, all that kind of thing. Um, and so we've been discussing it with your town officials already. Um, the draft is in, we worked together to ask for a couple of extensions on some of the dates. And uh, and so we're just awaiting our final report. When the final comes in, we're now going to have this piece of legislation in our hands and we'll again, we'll work together to um, to make sure that we get skating down the ice, get these reports going, get this assessment going and everything else, okay? The good news about this, um, you probably already know, is that without this, this CLI, you know, without having this information in our hands, uh when you have it in your hands, this is what the ministry's going to look at. They have all this information from all these communities, they say, ah, now you can apply for funding that you were speaking about earlier councillor. Right, now you have the proof in the pudding, here's the assessment, here's what we need, let's get some of these, some of this work done. Okay, so although it's a lot of upfront work and there's some upfront costs, long-term, it's the right thing to do, yeah. Okay, upgrades, um, in twenty twenty-three, um, I think uh Jim Roman had spoken to you a few months ago. Uh, we have a new gen set uh that's going to be installed, hopefully within the next little bit. Uh, we're just working a bit with uh our procurement department to make sure we get the right one for us. Um, and our filter rebuilds, now this one, we've been, we've been talking about it a bit since about two thousand sixteen. But other priorities came up, we had to do a SCADA, our SCADA was sick, so we had to do that. Um, so we've been patching it and trying to get by and trying to get by since two thousand sixteen. One of them now, the news is, it's dead. So it's taken apart, we now have three out of our four filters working, don't worry. The, the fourth is redundancy, we can still run that plant to top-notch on our three filters, right? But we have to now address it, so we're working again with your town officials, we're gonna find the right price, we're gonna find the right company. And uh, and we're going, hopefully, um, get two of them rebuilt this year, we'd like to rebuild two of them again next year. Okay, and then, you know, you've been listening to me, yeah, for a bunch of years, we're, we're gonna have a pretty fresh plant by the time we're done some of this stuff. Right, we've gone through, the plant has been there since ninety-seven, right? So it's not a spring chicken, we, we had to, we had to get through there eventually, so. So, that's it, it was, sorry, sometimes I can get long-winded, but I'm ready for questions.
Sorry, just before I open the floor to uh members of council, could you just speak for a moment about uh for public interest, the working relationship between Aqua and our own in-house waterworks department and, and the differences?
Sure, sure, so under the agreement, we are the operating authority and the overall responsible operator for the treatment and the collection and distribution, okay? Now, but when it comes to the distribution work, your team has the people that are doing that job, right? So the way we work together on that, we're the overall responsible operator, but Anthony's at, he's over at Town Works weekly. Uh, you know, having, having regular discussions, here's what's happening, here's what's planning, how are you making up with this and that? Um, you know, Elona again has worked closely with uh, you know, back when Brian was there and she'll start working with new Brian. So, it's uh, you know, it's, we, we keep a, a, a pretty close communicative uh relationship, your worship, um, and, and that's the way we plan to move forward.
Yeah, thank you very much, I do appreciate that, Councillor Shaba?
Who's ahead of us?
Oh, Councillor Owen first?
Uh, thanks, i- it's comforting to know that, you know, in this age where we're having a hard time keeping staff, that at least water, we can sleep at night now, because you can pull resources from wherever and make sure water's safe. That being said, that being said. Something's happening this year where, and, and like you mentioned a lot of changes and more pH or changing tanks, the water stinks. You can't say it differently, the water absolutely reeks and there's some times that it's a hell of a worse than others. Why this year, excuse me, compared to the past, is like it's gagging at times how bad the water smells?
Has there been a particular date when that happened?
Sunday. Like Sunday would have been what, thirtieth?
So what I encourage is that when you have a bump at your home, the water stinks, the water's brown, the water's uh, aware, wherever it may be, right? Please, please contact us immediately, contact Anthony and uh, and he'll send someone over to take, to take a look at it. Because when we, when we have these kind of issues, there, there could be something underlying. Now, having said that, the water stinks, we did have, and everybody here knows, that we had a little bump a couple of months ago, just around Christmas, where we didn't get the uh, the, the, the new dioxide system. Uh, we didn't, we didn't get it timed very well to get that going, our brown water issue, right councillor? Um, we didn't get that going quite in time with the ice cover, and the reason for that is this, when the, when the ice finally covers over the lake, we're dropping oxygen now, right? So these little nasty iron and manganese bacteria, they're out of air, they want to come and get some. So they start crawling up to the surface and into the bell they go and into our system, right? But if you turn on this dioxide system too early, it's going to smell like gasoline. So we have to be careful with that, so it's a timing. So again, what are we doing about it? We're working together with your town officials to see if we can get some monitoring equipment to really measure these levels and see exactly when we're going to have to implement this dioxide and ramp it up or ramp it down accordingly. And hopefully that will address some of the sting, that could have been where some of the sting came from, it had chemicals, so.
Yeah, burn chemical, burn chlorine.
Okay, so that's a, yeah, so then we've got, whenever there's a problem or really, we need to hear about it right away so that we can go on and and at least dive in and see there's never really needs, but there's spike concerns, but yeah.
Sorry everyone, Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship. Um, I just want to thank you guys for the presentation and I uh, I know that you guys are very dedicated to uh our water and wastewater treatment. And uh, I know if I have any questions, Anthony, I mean, oh, stop this tracking all of the road to answer the question.
Yeah, 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 that's how dedicated he is.
I do pick up on what uh Councillor Owen just said. I, I live in Shapewas for a long time and we have a standpipe in Shapewas. Uh, we have two problems, two, two critical problems in Shapewas that people just live with it. Uh, and one is low pressure, I'm not sure we are aware of that, high pressure is very uh prevalent on, on Shapewas, doesn't matter where you are. And second of all, uh, I see a bit of to, to quality of water at times could be very suspect. So I'm not sure how can we move forward to at least uh to remedy the situations that people will not uh or their ton of, and this is not a flesh on your, uh, you know, competency or anything like that, but this is just the reality of people that live in Shapewas. Uh, and, and you know, I, I hate to say people try drinking whiskey instead of drinking the water, but that's, that's where it's going. It, it, what, what is the, what is the long-term plan to have that uh, that problem at least uh resolved? Could I have a few more questions?
Okay, so yeah, you're right, the, the water that comes out of there, so, so most of the water that comes out of the plant, it, it distributes throughout Greater Kirkland. And then it heads up the hill to Shapewas and goes on the standpipe, most of the standpipe water heads its way through Shapewas and heads its way up to Swastika. Okay, now, the pressure is rather low coming out of there, why? Because there's a bit of a spider web, pipes that are, that are just outside of the, the standpipe and over towards where the car dealership used to be. That's a bit of a spider web in there and it's old infrastructure. And so the, the water does have a hard time flowing out of there, the pressures are not high. Um, we were working with, even with um, um, K L Gold, right, where they had issues getting enough water. The reason was, it just, it just wasn't going through those pipes fast enough, work has already been done, uh, down at the Miners Memorial to address some of that. And so that, that was probably the first step in, in addressing some of that, and there is further work uh to do. Now, the thing is councillor as well, um, you know, Kirkland Lake has, has gone through a lot of the same struggles that we have as well when it comes to uh, to employee stability, right? So we, we're working with different directors, you know, always going through the same story, that, that knowing it has to be addressed, but it's uh, you know, that, that, that's probably step two now, to address a bit of the spider webs in the, in that heart, you know, I.
I do, sorry, I'm, I'm just cautioning um council members, just to make sure that their questions don't have to do with the actual distribution. We do have a foreman, um, and those questions can be filtered through our CAO, through our staff as well. So, just trying to keep it with Aqua, within the range of Aqua.
Yeah, okay, you did talk about public awareness, uh, whose job is that? Do we have some going in terms of public awareness, is that of, of concerning water usage, consumption of water and all that? So are we doing it or is something that we're implementing?
Mm-hmm, so what we've done, so what we've done in other municipalities is we work with the, with, with the town is that say, uh, an information package of the world is the next water fill. Or something along those lines, right? So we've done that at different places, we can continue with that, uh, like I said, I'm going to get into the high school and talk to, and talk to the kids, the kids are the ones that go home and tell their parents about all this. So, so those are, those are some of the things we can do, we can publish things on the town website, uh, these kind of things. I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, any further questions, Councillor Owen?
Uh, just to comment to back up, uh, Councillor Owen's uh comments with sinky water, it's on Third Street too. Uh, mostly in the mornings, early, and I figured it was because I feel close to the plant. It's not near, it's not monstrous, but it is a chemical smell and it's not.
Councillor Dykens?
Uh, through you mayor, um, I'm not sure if it's a question you can answer or yourself, I think it could process. Uh, so uh, Twinket stated, and I believe it's under the drinking water quality management standard. And it says that the mayor and CAO will endorse the newest version. I'm just not sure, like, process-wise, why is it the mayor and the CAO and? So if we can, if it doesn't have to be answered now, that's okay?
No, 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 so that's fine, so it's actually all of council, that, that does it, um, yeah, that's all. Yeah, I, I'm the one that has to sign and sign it, but yeah, I think it will be brought to all of them.
Thank you, I'm just new, so.
No, no, absolutely, that's a good question, yeah, absolutely. So any further questions?
Um, can I just add, the, the, Councillor Shaba, oh, sorry, I mentioned, mentioned the water tower, I just wanted to, just wanted to mention that uh, the water tower is controlled, um, like the, the pressure that's exerted on the distribution system from the water towers relative to the level of water in that tower, right? So, we, so as we fill that tower up, you put water in there, it exerts a certain amount of pressure on the distribution system. There really isn't a lot of elevation relative to Shapewas, right? Because Shapewas is up on the top of the hill, so there's a bit of uh, there's a bit of a challenge here with that, that itself, right, right, the level. Um, and I just wanted to ask, uh, Councillor Shaba, what was the, uh, you, you mentioned the water quality, what was, what was the smell? Was it a, was it colored water?
Um, uh, to you, uh, uh, Madam Mayor, I think, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't do any chemical analysis on that, I would not do that. So I'm just gonna give you my, the aesthetic part of it, uh, which would be the colorization, the odor and all of that. Because sometimes you open that tap water and it's brown, the brown water, I mean, that will, that will run for a long time, sometimes that color will not, will not, they disappear. So, I mean, the last question that I have for you guys is, do you guys have any sampling stations in Shapewas? And if so, but the frequency of sampling, because you will see that if you do a sampling station, they just, it's a, it's just the aesthetic in nature. Uh, which I think there is, but again, people are repulsive when drinking water does not come in very crystal clear.
There is one, one sampling station in Shapewas.
One, only one, yeah.
Anything further, council members? Thank you very much gentlemen for doing education, we always appreciate when you come to council and we hope to have you again soon.
Thank you very much, reach out anytime.
Absolutely.
Um, moved by Councillor La Chava, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen, be resolved that the delegation from Ontario Water Agency entitled Aqua twenty twenty-two highlights M E C P inspection, drinking water quality management standard and twenty twenty-three plant operations be received for information purposes.
All in favor? No opposed, item very unanimous. Item number five point one, acceptance of, uh, five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Councillor Casey Owen, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the special joint meeting of council held January eighteen, twenty twenty-three, and minutes of the regular meeting of council held January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? No opposed, item very unanimous.
Moved by Councillor La Chava, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen, be resolved that council about the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the committee of adjustment meeting held July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? No, um, opposed, oh, okay, all in favor? Thank you, none opposed, item very unanimous. Reports of municipal officers and communications, item six point one, verbal report, Rural Ontario Municipal Association, Roma. Twenty twenty-three annual conference update, Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
Agreed by the mayor's managing council. Uh, I, along with Mayor White and Director Corporate Services Sean DeCarr, attended the Rural Ontario US Association or Roma uh, conference from January twenty-second to twenty-fourth. Now Roma undertakes outreach advocacy to work collectively with Ontario's municipal community to ensure that provincial funding policies and programs consider rural perspectives and unique challenges. Part of this advocacy is providing opportunities at the annual conference for municipality and to delegate to various government ministries on important issues municipalities are facing. Uh, Kirkland Lake would take advantage of that opportunity, we had several delegations. Uh, the first we had was the, to Minister of Infrastructure, or actually to the Assistant to Administrator uh, regarding the construction of a permanent pumping station. But that, that hard January of Swastika does also include the repurposing of the former plant or its complete demolition. The total cost of this project would be around one point five million. We requested financial support. Uh, we were informed that the province is in talks with the federal government to obtain more dollars for infrastructure projects like the one we described. We also had a delegation to Greg Ripford, Minister of Northern Development. We provide the minister with overview of the town's need for more industrial land and request assistance in reviewing professional services to help identify areas of development and the feasibility of such an undertaking. We were informed that funding for such initiatives is difficult to obtain, rather capital projects or projects developing the land in more realistic. We're also involved in two regional delegations with the city of Timiscay Shores. The first was to Minister Clark of Municipal Appears and Housing pertaining to the unauthorized development in territories without misorganization. We highlight, we highlighted that large tracts of land are being surveyed into small parcels promoted and offered for investment and development of communities, uh, not being established in the district of Timiscay. We stress that significant risks or concerns municipalities within the district include lack for local provincial interests, lack of indigenous consultation, lack of regard for Ontario building, building code, risk to human health to safety, land use compatibility issues, pressures on services, et cetera. The minister was aware of these concerns. Now we stress to him that these developments would not stop in our area and that could spread to other parts of Ontario. We were left, we were left the impression a site visit from the minister might be possible. The other regional cooperation involved is speaking to this listener general regarding the implementation of community safety wellbeing plans. We stress the need for assistance with implementation of these plans. We stress the need for assistance with implementation of these plans, namely funding for a planning and grant programs where municipalities could access programs to support various initiatives contained in these plans. We were directed to some funding opportunities, however, these were not specific to the implementation of these plans. Now, by many municipal conferences, Roma offered many opportunities to network and to attend seminars on various topics concerning municipalities. One topic that is quite prominent at conferences these days, and Roma was no exception, is workforce development. The workplace has changed. The municipalities are having difficulties retaining and attracting staff. The seminars that attended on this topic stress that workforce expectations are changing. The top line thing candidates and employees are seeking are work-life balance, attractive salary and benefits, positive workplace culture, job security and career progression. The speaker also stressed that healthy workplace culture is vital to ensure workplace stability and that an attractive workplace nurtures the following: wellness, including work-life integration, opportunities to grow and develop teamwork, collaboration and performance excellence. There's a popular saying in the field of municipal workforce development resources that culture eat culture eats strategy for breakfast every time. In other words, no matter how detailed your strategy or plans are, if you have a poor workplace culture, achieving those strategic goals becomes all the more difficult to achieve. So it was a useful conference and uh I think it was bantered to work. Welcome any questions?
Any questions? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, the first part of your presentation, uh, meeting with the ministers, I think, so uh do you have any timelines to get back to them to maybe uh check in to see how things are progressing on uh on this request?
Uh, through you, worship to member to councillor, uh, Shaba. Um, we have actually already started to reach out, uh, for example, to the uh social general regarding the community wellbeing plan. Uh, but we will do follow up, um, uh, constantly regarding some of these. Now, some we know are going to be more difficult to achieve than others, okay? But we will keep um uh providing input to the various ministers to get more feedback and hopefully uh have Kirkland Lake's issues progress further. Thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I just want to thank mayor, C A O and and director of corporate services for attending. Um, for a number of years, we've let Kirkland Lake fall into the background. Um, it's a lot, I don't care what you're doing in life, it's a lot harder to say no to someone's face than it is to their email or whatever. Um, the fact that they, yeah, we're already following up is is letting the government know that we're serious, we're here and we need some help so we can be the optimum community that we want to be, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other motion?
Moved by councillor Casey Owen, seconded by councillor La Chava. Be resolved that verbal report entitled Roma twenty twenty three annual conference update be received for information purposes.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous. Item six point two, twenty twenty three water and wastewater rates, Lloyd Crawford, Treasurer.
Mayor and councillors. Uh, the uh the first report that we're gonna address tonight is is related to the water and wastewater rates. If you'll remember, uh, those were on council last year. The as the asset management plan had several recommendations about how we could deal with some environment structure problems. It seems like we almost planned it. Aqua kind of set the the tone here for for this discussion in in a very meaningful way. Um, their main recommendations were to increase our water and our wastewater rates to try and bridge that gap between what we what we're doing now and what we should be doing to replace and repair and maintain the current infrastructure that we have. They came up with a couple of rates which were based on, you know, quite a bit of analysis of the state of our assets now, um, how we financed our assets in the past and what kind of opportunities we might have in the future to, you know, to finance that as well. Anyways, the they came up with two rates, one for water and one for wastewater, and that's what's in this report. Um, we're doing this now because I guess we want to, two things to come out of it. One is we get the the dollars in the door earlier so that we can start kind of working at getting a plan in place. And the second part is to kind of help differentiate between the fact that, you know, we have an operating cost to our water and our wastewater system and we have a capital cost. And this rate increase is separate, is the way they recommended is that we treat it separately. We say we need to put some of our wa- water and wastewater revenues towards the future ca- capital requirements. And they they recommend we do it this way. So we're bringing it to you now to kind of start the process. This is the capital portion. As we get through our budget process, which will be the second report, um, then we will talk probably about whether any rate increases are required for the operating side. But again, this is to kind of keep us in compliance or at least make an effort to get to what was recommended in the asset management plan last summer. Um, I've been told everybody has a copy of it. I don't know, be very happy to answer the questions about this. I can take a run at what I can remember from the plan as well if you want to.
Okay, we'll open. Further questions? Councillor Owens?
So I know we've got some catching up to do. We've heard councillor Owen mentioned many, many, many times that we need to work. My issue is that we're sitting on a lot of reserves on the operation side, like not necessarily just water, but to have the town just collect money to sit on it for future use, especially in this time, like where people are hurting financially, because anybody that's got natural gas right now has has like sticker shock by opening their bills lately. So we're just gonna collect money, sit on it to fund future repairs. Do we have plans to put this to use right away? Like, do we have concrete plans coming this summer, like to to start fixing our infrastructure?
Yeah, so through you, Madam Mayor, I'll get used to doing that.
To be fair, for God's sake.
Uh, yes and no. So the 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 idea, we're not just putting it in the bank, I probably misspoke a little bit. Uh, we're not just putting it in a bank to sit there until some nebulous date in the future. Um, you know, like I said, it was, it worked well that Aqua was up here talking about their needs. Well, Aqua, these two rates actually fund what Aqua was talking about. Um, exclusive, you know, and there's other issues within our our infrastructure as well. So if we build a road, obviously, we're gonna, for the most part, if we fix a road, we're gonna do the stuff underneath the road as well. And there's a water and wastewater component to every kilometer of road that we rebuilt. And there's these these Aqua requirements. So, um, you know, there are, you're just starting the budget. I can tell you right now, there are many items on the budget related to water and wastewater. Um, is it a road type project? No, but a lot of it is Aqua type of of requests and have some pretty high priorities about what they think needs to be done very quickly versus being delayed. So, you know, eighty dollars we get in now really do go to current projects if they're available, depending on how we fund. So taxes and rate water rates are only one piece of the puzzle. Um, you know, so building up reserves is, you know, is still a good thing because you're, you know, you're not gonna finance finance everything in the future out of future rates. So we wanna kind of bit of give a little bit of a buffer so we're not doing this. Every time we run a big project, we have to go and find five million dollars. We got some sitting waiting for that project. Um, so yeah, it's it's, I guess I probably misspoke by saying we wanna put, yeah, we wanna put it into a pool, but there's there's active dollars going to be spent for water and wastewater.
Okay, councillor Dykens?
Uh, through you, your worship, uh, through our treasurer. Um, so this will result in about a hundred and six, hundred and seven thousand dollar increase in the water and wastewater uh rate or um what we accumulate. Um, I'm not familiar with the budget. What can be taken now like annually for those two items?
Oh, fuck my head.
Ballpark, I mean ballpark, like, is it millions? Is it hundreds or thousands?
Hundreds of thousands. Um, I wish I could tell you, but I'll be honest with you, I I was working on the budget this afternoon, so I've got a bunch of other figures kind of racking around up there. Um, yeah, hundreds of thousands on the on the rates.
So, okay.
So, I mean, the one point seven and it comes out of forty. Make that somewhere in a neighborhood of a half a million dollars of revenue here. Or whatever.
Oh, over the span of fifteen years?
Yeah, well, it may be, so right now, if we add a half a million and we're gonna add forty, right, so we'll have five hundred forty in the grand here, and then next year you'd add another forty and and so forth. The I mean, the thing to keep in mind is the uh the asset management plan identified that not only do we have a current gap, we have a future gap. We're expecting assets to have to be replaced. And that number was was astronomical, went for the whole town, and that was just our infrastructure. We're working on equipment and other stuff right now.
Any further questions? Councillor Owen?
Um, if we didn't do this rate increase, um, what would the result be?
Well, uh, sir, you're not a mayor, can you?
I'm sorry, I didn't do it either, so.
They've been here a year now and they still get it what I operate. Um, I mean, it's common sense is we just won't have the money to do the work and you'll end up kind of cherry picking off a list of capital projects that you can't pay for. Either you have to go open your debt, you have to go, if you're lucky, you'll find funding, you know, some kind of outside funding, but you know, as the C A O mentioned, that's kind of a hit and miss thing. And if you happen to ask for money where they prioritize their funding, you're you're off to the races. Uh, but, you know, you can't really rely on that type of top-down funding and say that we're gonna have it. There is some dollars, I always say, for gas tax money, which is specifically earmarked for infrastructure, um, not necessarily for water and wastewater. They're supposed to fund themselves in theory. Um, over too too much of the theory, but by legislation, water has to fund its own operations. Wastewater, we've taken a position within this community to do the same thing. Um, so yeah, they, there's just a a common sense, there's a shortfall, you're gonna end up cherry picking projects and you're gonna say which ones are most important, which ones, and and you run some of the risks, like Aqua pointed out, where something can go sideways. They talked about the filters that they've been putting off and now they're at a point where they have to do them. That's the decision-making that kind of pops up and it'll get worse, you know, the the less money you have available.
Councillor Dykens?
Uh, to you, uh, your worship, just just the comment, I've done research on different municipalities and what they're doing in the same vein. We're right in line, or this recommendation is right in line with what so many others are, to try to uh be sustainable, but also to beat those future uh needs that we're anticipating.
Yeah, we're we're hardly the uh mayor. We're hardly the only municipality that has this problem, uh, under funding of capital in the past. Um, some of that is, you know, just a reflection of our, in our case, our community's health, which is fluctuated wildly. Um, some of it is the way that the various levels of government have funded us. You know, there's peaks and valleys as well, kind of provinces and federal government. Um, but for the most part, it's it's about whether or not you're charging enough money to afford the services you're providing when it comes to these items. And we are not the, we certainly don't stand alone in the sense of making those decisions, which weren't necessarily strategic in the past.
Any further comments? Thank you, survey. Do you have a motion?
Moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three bin zero zero one entitled twenty twenty three water and wastewater rates be received. And that council hereby approve and increase the water rates of one point seven percent and wastewater rates of three point five percent for twenty twenty three. And finally, that a bylaw establishing the twenty twenty three water and wastewater rates for the town of Kirkland Lake be brought forward for three readings on February seventh, twenty twenty three.
All in favor?
Um, for the water, um, did it mean we wanted to do this for fifteen years and one for twenty and or and the motion shift for one year, is that correct? Okay, sorry.
No, no, that's absolutely correct, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I'm gonna, no, that's perfect. Uh, all in favor? Uh, no opposed, count. Uh, the motion carries unanimous, no. Excuse me, uh, item six point three, twenty twenty proposed budget guidelines and schedule, again, Lloyd Crawford, Treasurer.
Goodness, Mayor, you do counsel. Uh, this report is just kind of your your guide to what's going on in the background and when we expect to have numbers to you and and the process we'd like to go through for this year's budget. Um, these are recommended dates, we're well into the process in the background anyways. Uh, you'll see that this week, we're expecting to have, you know, the budgets in from the various directors and that people who are, you know, working in their own particular areas. And then we're gonna spend some time over the next, almost a month, trying to bring that all together and trying to, there's a, you know, there's an iterative process for the management team, just like there will be for for council. And they'll set priorities and sit down and and try and, you know, decide where the dollars are gonna be spent and keeping in mind that the rate pairs are always on the line for this stuff. So we're not trying to, uh, well, we're trying to keep that always in the back of our mind, front of our mind, depending on where we are. Um, so again, this is just more or less our draft schedule. Just want to point out, we're going to try and do another survey. We're gonna start next week. Uh, last year's was a little bit mixed, but we kind of forced the timeline a little bit, so we're gonna have a little bit more time in there to try and get a little bit more feedback and perhaps more robust type feedback. Um, then we're gonna bring it to you, it'll be tabled, and then you you'll all have some time to, you know, work your way through it on your own, and then we've got essentially three meetings set up that whatever time it takes, I mean, if it takes four meetings and then we'll go to four, but, you know, we're we're guessing at three. Um, you know, and with uh anticipated April eighteenth is when final budget would be would be passed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
None noted. A motion. Moved by councillor Casey Owen, seconded by councillor La Chava. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three bin zero zero two entitled twenty twenty three proposed budget guidelines and schedule be received. And that the twenty twenty three budget schedule be approved. And finally, that council direct the treasurer to prepare and submit an operating capital and rate-supported budget for twenty twenty three.
All in favor? No opposed, motion carried unanimous. Item number six point four, chief building official contracted service, contract extension with over cost, director of economic development.
Thank you, through your worship. Uh, council, um, as you're aware, we've had some changes in the uh development services department. Uh, we don't have a chief building official right now, but we do still have a contract with fire attend consultants, they were providing services to us. Prior to us hiring a chief building official, and they are able to provide us with services in support of our activities uh going forward. Uh, to do that, however, we do need to have the individuals from R S M appointed by council as per legislation, and that's what this report is very important to you.
Any questions from council? Also none noted. Well, that a motion, right?
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three B B zero zero two entitled chief building official contracted services contract extension be received. And then the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute a contract extension agreement with R S M Building Consultants to provide chief building official services as per the term set up in R F B five five oh twenty. And that council hereby approve the appointment of Devon Stave Stave uh as chief building official, Grant Schwartz and Trouber as building inspector and Barbara Mockney as building inspector for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake. And finally, that a bylaw appointing a chief building official and building inspectors be brought forward for three readings on February seventh, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous. Item six point five, twenty twenty three annual accessibility report, Jennifer Montreux, municipal clerk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council, the annual accessible accessibility Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. The annual accessible accessibility status report is a mechanism for council and the public, uh, to be brought aware of the town's progress in preventing and removing barriers as outlined in the multi-year accessibility plan the town prepares. This is also the manner in which the town is able to identify that it's, it's meeting its requirements uh, under the Accessibility for All Carriers with Disabilities Act. Um, after consultation with the senior management team, the twenty twenty two report highlights the town of Kirkland Lake's continued commitment to accessibility, specifically on the measures taken in the implementation of provincial requirements this past year. Some notable mentions are as follows. Paving a walking, uh, trail at multifunctional park to meet accessible standards. Enhanced lighting added to overflow parking lot at community complex. Accessibility enhancements including, um, in the plans for the library upgrades such as barrier free doors, height adjusted service desk and height adjusted shelving and tables for use by patrons. Installation of accessible, uh, storage containers at public works for, uh, parking lots or waste and recycling containers. Installation of barrier free door and downstairs entry point to the public works building. Accessible button upgrades to detect pioneer residents' tariff stores. Ongoing installation of the tachyphites and pedestrian crosswalks along government road. Uh, and we offered barrier free, uh, voting during municipal and school board elections, including at the long-term care homes and retirement residences. Um, once received, the documents posted on the town's website, as always, members of the public are welcome to provide comments on this report and accessibility matters in general. This feedback can provide administration the ability to measure the town's continued commitment in providing barrier free services and service delivery. That is the summary of my report.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Shaba.
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, to, uh, uh, Madam Clerk. Um. Do we have any quality assurance mechanism? What I mean by that is that the people that we're trying to care for with this policy, and when they do come here, do we have any follow up, uh, survey for them to really tell us their experience about what we have, what we think we have for them? And maybe solicit for changes because I, I do that in other establishments. Well, we have this for you, uh, to utilize. But tell us if it's working or not. Is there something like that that, you know, I know you said you have all this, that and that. Do we actually pull this money coming in whether maybe other people, someone on the chair or so? And they go back to you, ever contact them, what's your experience here and how can we better serve you?
Sure. Through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council and specifically Counselor Shaba. Uh, the town does have a accessibility, uh, policy with a feedback, uh, mechanism built in. Um, now, in terms of accessibility surveys and feedback received from the public, um, it is built in the election process. For example, I have to make sure as a clerk that we, we, uh, receive the feedback from, uh, anybody who, who requires, uh, a, a need for accessibility. Uh, but there hasn't been a survey from my knowledge in the community and that's something that we, as a, uh, accessibility coordinator can look at, uh, publishing for the year. It's also, it would work very well with the fact that the senior management team is planning on, uh, conducting a wholesome review of its multi-year, the town's multi-year accessibility plan. So that can, can work very well if we can get community input and it's very vital to for us to know what the community needs rather than us just putting services out there that are accessible and need. Thank you.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, I have a question on the report under works completed standard operations. The first bullet there says repair maintenance and removal of barriers on municipal trails, sidewalks is the one that I have a problem with because I walk a lot. And there are a lot of sidewalks that still have barriers or in bad shape. Um, very difficult for people with, uh, vision problems or, uh, and so I'm not sure why that would be in work completed. I know there has been some work done in the last couple of years and I'm very happy to see that. And it all can't be done at one time. It's just too much. But I'm wondering if, if that's really where we should be or am I reading it wrong? And there has been some work completed. Maybe that's, I'm just reading it wrong.
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, to all councils, specifically to Counselor Owen. Um. As far as I understand it, when I received the, I coordinate for the different departments. Uh, there are, there are ongoing matters, but you're absolutely correct. I don't have a specific, uh, road, uh, or sidewalk, uh, plan that has been completed by a miss valid at this time.
Counselor Owen, follow up?
Yeah, I, I was probably just being too busy and I wanted to bring that out at a public meeting that we still have work to do on the sidewalks.
Anything further from council? Have the motion read?
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three C L P O six entitled twenty twenty two annual accessibility status report be received for information.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number seven, considerations of notice of motion. There are none. Did I skip one? Oh, sorry. Item six point six, I'm jumping ahead. It's been a long day. Uh, council conference attendance policy amber clean, still in executive assistance to the C A O, also deputy clerk.
Oh, great. So through you, Madam Mayor, to all members of council. Uh, the purpose of establishing the council conference attendance policy is to provide a consistent approach uh, that is accountable and transparent regarding the selection of attended, uh, council members at municipal government for related events by elected officials along with the management, meaning the approvals and the budgeting of remaining expenditures. So administration, administration suggestion. The adoption of such a policy has a number of benefits, including, uh, a mechanism between the clerk's office and council identifying what is available. Uh, receiving member interest in preparation of the annual budget process and in a reoccurring timeline. Uh, so every year, uh, enhanced communication between administration and council when determining delegation, uh, defining the responsibilities of members of council and staff in the management of event coordination. Uh, an established process for members of council attending at events and the required, uh, reporting post event. And a guide for council on their financial obligations surrounding traveling expenses. So in terms of budgeting, language and the policy has been purposely left flexible insofar as the budget aspect stating allocation of funds may be included. However, through early annual reporting of events and guarding the interest of members, uh, those thresholds may never be required. Uh, administration are suggesting a cap of maximum of three members of council per event, just based on uh, seeing what other municipalities do. Uh, in terms of expenditure, both are managed in accordance with the town's travel expense policy. While the content elaborated and the proposed policy uh, included to provide further clarity for members as follows. So meals will not be paid for days where such is included in a conference, uh, meeting package. Um, in terms of transportation, research on alternative model modes of transportation, uh, car rentals, airfare shuttles must be identified by the member of council and submitted to the clerk for comparison and for budgeting purposes. Um, additional costs associated with companion attendance, uh, such as additional banquet tickets or accommodation costs are at the sole responsibility of the members of council and not reimbursed by the town. So in these instances, administration recommends that the funds be prepaid by the member while the town registered. And all alcohol beverages are at the sole responsibility of members of council and not reimbursed by the town. Administration recommends that separate invoices be issued just for ease of reimbursement. And travel expense for a shopping confused within two weeks of the end of the event, including all original receipts where applicable. So in terms of communication, council members attending conferences will meet with the C A O to discuss any delegation topics beforehand and to just ensure that there's unity in the issues in the next agenda. Uh, lastly, at the next regular meeting. Share a verbal summary of their experience at the event under the council report section of the meeting. And the municipal clerk's office will also communicate, uh, when these are to appear on the agendas. Basically, that is the summary of your report and the municipal clerk is available for questions.
Any questions from council? Yeah, Counselor Owen?
I have one question and I can't find where, where the exact wording is now. I should have marked it on the Reddit. Um, it has to do with, um, when a counselor wants to go to say a third, uh, one extra convention. And it says the C A O and clerk will, uh, make the decision or whatever, or anyways. And if it's decided that they're allowed to go, a report will be given. And if it's decided they're not allowed to go, it doesn't talk about a report. And I would like to see a report either way, not that I'm concerned about our current situation. But this policy is going to be here long after I'm here and there could be personalities come into play at, in future dates where, um, some management people, they may just not like a counselor. And, but with no report. If it's. And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, I could have misread it.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, through you, Madam, uh, Mayor, all councils, uh, specifically to Counselor Owen. Page, uh, two of five of the proposed policy, um, under budget C and D. Regardless, if it's, if it's over the two events, staff would be bringing forward a report, uh, if there was no budgeted funds for it. It'd have to come to council to receive approval. So if you're looking at page ninety seven of one ten on the bottom one.
And, uh. Numbers.
We have one.
I'm almost there. I'm almost there. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm a little frazzled tonight. So what else?
So under number five I, then it's, um, recital C and D. So administration shall be required to bring forward a report to council for any attendance approvals or a buyer request is beyond annually approved and established budgets. So the way that it works in terms of the proposed policy, we would already know ahead of time which members of council are going where, which means by virtue of that, I will have already prepared the budget and put a submission to council, which would probably, uh, be approved already. So anything above and beyond that would need to come back to council for.
Okay, thank you. I, I must, I think I misread the intent. Uh, thank you for clarifying that.
Any further questions?
Uh, your worship to agree that. Um, so I just want to be clear before we pass this, which I think we will, um. It, it said when it comes to different modes of transportation that there will be a comparison. But ultimately, who will decide? Um, because there's other considerations other than a little bit of money because I work and if I have to travel two days by car, that's extra expense for me. But if I can fly in the morning and fly out the night and it's not too far apart. So that, I just want to make sure upfront that we're sure, take other things into consideration.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council and specifically to Counselor Dickens. Um, yes, that's absolutely good point. I mean, if we're looking at a fifty dollar difference and we're talking about the time management, then I can't see that being, uh, something that would exasperate, bring a report council. However, if we're looking at hundreds of dollars, that might be a different scenario, especially if we're meeting, if we're teetering on the threshold of, um, the budgeted amounts.
For sure. So if it's, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm calling up. So if it's within the budgeted amount, like, because there is carpooling, which is an option, but there's also personal and professional ethics can, can, so I, I, I just don't want us to be bound by one particular. Uh, I understand if you want to take a private jet and, yeah.
On your own dock?
Oh, the dock fair?
I just don't want to be, yeah, I just want to be clear upfront, like not to be honed into, uh, you have to carpool and it's going to take two extra days to.
Well, Madam Mayor, through you, uh, that listed up never the intent, uh, reasonability will prevail. Yes.
Thank you. I, I understood that, but I just wanted to make sure.
Any further questions? I'll have the motion read.
Sure. Uh, moved by Counselor Vlad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three C L P O eight entitled council conference attendance policy be received. And that council hereby approve the council conference attendance policy as presented. And that council hereby approve the participation of the following members to the twenty twenty three conferences. Roma being the chief administrative officer, the mayor and director of corporate services, all of that are required. Uh, Ogra, chief administrative officer. Um, we have, we are striking Counselor Dickens from giving, uh, rich, the recommendation as presented and director of public works for designate. Uh, Fanon, the chief administrative officer, mayor, Counselor Kylie and Counselor Shaba. And Aimo, uh, chief administrative officer, mayor and Counselor Owen. And finally, the C N C L twenty twenty three zero zero one council conference attendance policy be inserted into the corporate policy name.
All in favor? No opposed, motion carried unanimous. Now, item seven, considerations of notice of motions, none noted. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty two zero zero two being a bylaw to set the municipal water and wastewater rates for twenty twenty three prior to the adoption of a budget.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous.
Moved by Counselor Vlad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read. A first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty three zero zero six being a bylaw to appoint a chief building official and building inspectors for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff, none noted. Item number ten, notices of motion. I do have to step away from the chair. So at this moment, Counselor Shaba is now acting mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can stay at my desk.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do have, um, item ten point one. Um, at next meeting, I would like to introduce a motion regarding the passing of bill forty two, Gender Affirming Healthcare Act. And then item ten point two, at the next council meeting, I would like to bring a motion forward regarding phlebotomy services in the north end of the district. At this point, I'm going to be playing the chair. Thank you, sir, if you want to ask for any bonus. Is there any other notices or motion to be given at this meeting? None noted. Thank you, council. Item number eleven, council reports, updates from members of council. Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, I do have one. I, uh, we're sister. Okay, um. I attended the grand opening, uh, of, uh, the gathering, uh, in here on January twenty fifth, thousand point three. And it was a very, uh, it was a very spectacular event, uh. Uh. It's passive renovation up to a million dollars of all the, uh, uh, daycare rooms or whatnot. I mean, pretty amazing because, uh, some of the fixtures that you see at home, and suddenly go to the daycare, they all look, uh, different sizes. So. So, so, um, uh, it was good and, uh, I convey a congratulations. That is on behalf of the mayor of council to, uh, um, to, to the daycare staff. So I'd like to express my appreciation to Madame Chantel and Madame Pauline. Uh, they took the time to, uh, take us around to see all the various room and renovations. And then of course, uh, that was a good, uh, get together in the gym. It was served with, uh, good food pizza, clever, uh, refused pizza. So, oh, well, well. So I thank them very much for their hospitality. So that is my report.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Owens?
So, uh, through. Yeah, that's right. Through Madam Mayor, to the rest of council. Uh, Verne and I attended the first meeting of the new teaching board last week. Uh, for the first time in a long time, it's a full board. Eleven members with only four, three hundred members. So it's a good mix of people and Madam Mayor was chosen as the, uh, chair of the board. So it's good. For Kirkland Lake, we're trying to get some solid voice out of Kirkland. Uh, one thing that was brought up to our attention is that, uh, mitigation funding for T H U through, because of COVID and the extra expenses brought on through, because of COVID is coming to an end at the end of this year. And that two thousand and twenty four would potentially see a return of the original, uh, funding agreement worth, uh, thirty seventy. And that, so municipalities may see an increase in the, uh, what we have to pay in to teach you. Um, so that's something that you'll have to consider at the end of this year for next year's budget. But we did, uh, teach you send back, uh, I believe it was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I, I can't remember the figure in two thousand and twenty specifically for this. So that money should be in reserve. So that money should be in reserve and that's was the intent when, uh, we sent it back, uh. A few years ago, so just to keep that in mind for the budget process. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Dickens?
Uh, through you, um, your worship to council. Uh, I'd like to pass along the message from one of our residents regarding, uh, snowpawing. Uh, the resident wanted to commend the new council with respect to the manner of snow. We move on. Bowing this year near his residence, um, especially with, with respect to the big snowfall around Christmas. I'm not sure exactly what was different this year, but he was really thankful. So I quietly said thankful and then I redirected it to the proper place of praise, which is public works and our, um. Coach department. So just wanted to pass along the council and maybe your CAO to your public works department.
Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to council, uh, I want to congratulate, uh. Our mayor on being elected as a director to municipal, to municipal municipal association. Uh, she certainly made her presence known at that meeting. And, uh, again, goes raising of her profile, uh, this time within the district. And I, I'm very, I'm glad she took the job because I had committed one or the other of us to do it. So. On my way to council tonight, I was, uh, stopped by a resident. And I know his complaint and I know it very well because I used to walk on these sidewalks. He asked me if it was illegal to run a snowmobile on a sidewalk. And I said, yes, it is. And this has to do with, uh, Government Road East. Uh, snowmobiles are riding on sidewalk to get to the gas station. This was a problem many years ago and I took it to then staff sergeant Don Gourd. And he went to the motel and he spoke to them. There is another way, I, I, I just want to remind residents, or residents, most residents and tourists. That there is another way to get to that gas station. And that is to go along Station Road to Nipissing Lane. And then down Tweed Spirit and Gas Station. That way you're not on a sidewalk. And I used to walk that sidewalk to and from work. And it's extremely dangerous. There's nowhere to go if you're a pedestrian and you've got two snowmobiles or even one snowmobile. Coming towards you. So I'm hoping that, that people will show courtesy and, and that perhaps our. Our reps to the, to the police service board will bring this issue up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Yep.
That one, uh, that's kind of bad one here. I almost forgot it. Um, it's, uh, I, I. Written the newspaper a few weeks ago and then of course there was a, a bituary about, uh, Molly Bowles. Uh, Molly happened to be a pastor CEO at this one. I expressed my condolences to. The staff, I know many of you, uh, knew Molly Bowles and, uh, to his family and all his friends.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Madam Clerk? Yes, please address the snowmobiling.
Uh, just to have everybody, uh, upbeat aware, the town is currently, the, the town currently has an active, um. Campaign for snowmobile awareness, uh, ongoing presently, um, which includes, uh, on all our social media feeds. Uh, through our, um, partnerships, uh, our wild enforcement officer went and handed out the flyers to all of the hotels. Uh, just the stores and in around the towns, uh, and the high, uh, usage areas. Um, as well as has made contact with our, um, our fellow, uh, police force. Just so that everybody is aware, we have an active campaign.
So that's kind of it. Uh, item eleven point two, my, um, Roma. Report. So this is part of when you do go to a conference as councillor, you do have to report back. So I'm not going to cover off the same items that CAO did because of redundant. And we don't need to be here any longer than we already have in this evening. So this year, the Roma, uh, conference ran from Sunday, January twenty second to Tuesday, January twenty fourth. Myself, CAO Alan Smith and director of corporate services, Sean LeCarte, attended on behalf of the town of Kirkland Lake. The ministers held sessions with us that were based on open dialogue and real communication. Unlike in the past, uh, we would merely read our, our speaking notes. And these exchanges this year were really more relaxed and transparent and more of a conversation. With two of the delegations, um, that had a price tag, we were given good direction on avenues to be investigated. Be it governmental loan programs, new approaches, including seek from local partners. And working with our police services board to assist in funding in community safety and well-being activities. Minister Michael Kirzner was one of the most positive meetings. With him inviting Mr. John Vantoff, our MPP, to the actual meeting, which was a surprise to us. And a true pleasure to have our MPP join us. Um, he had his office reach out to us within moments of us exiting, uh, the room. And those actions make you really aware that these ministers are engaged and interested in truly listening and ready to assist the municipalities. Uh, there were also several education sessions over the three days. Myself and staff worked together to schedule. So we weren't attending the same sessions for the most part. I attended the welcoming newcomers to rural Ontario session, which is really relevant, um, in Kirkland Lake at this time. I also attended the keynote speaker Jesse Wente's presentation. And data-driven decision-making for rural Ontario. Other learning opportunities had to be missed due to the timing of our delegations overlapping these concurrent sessions. But I did come out of the conference inspired and quite excited to put the new found knowledge into practice. And I would like to congratulate councillor Mark Wilson from Tumis King Shores. Who was elected to the board of Roma, so he will bring northern representation to that board. So that is. My Roma report. Thank you for indulging in council members. And my review, um, since last council meeting. The office of the mayor participated in the reading and proclamation and, uh, flag raising for Bell's Let's Talk thing on January twenty fifth. Members of the local Bell team, director of community services, Ms. Bonnie Saffrider. Members of the public and two representatives from CMHA joined five of our council members at this event. Raising awareness around mental health and mental illness. We encourage Kirkland Lakers to keep listening, to keep talking and keep being there for ourselves and each other. As stated, councillor Owens and I attended the first Tumis King Health and Board of Health. I did have a pleasant meeting in Kirkland Lake with the MPP John Vantoff, who will be delegating to council. In the near future to update us on the work of his office. Councillor Owen and I attended the first meeting of the Tumis King Municipal Association. I attended Australia Day celebrations on the twenty seventh. With Grant Stewart and members of the Heath and Sherwood in concept teams. Though Australia Day is traditionally celebrated on January twenty sixth. To commemorate the day Captain Arthur Phillips rode ashore at Sydney Cove. Raised the Union Jack and proclaimed British sovereignty over that, that part of the continent in seventeen eighty eight. It was quite an experience. Uh, the CAO, director of economic development and myself, met with local property owners and potential investors. To discuss possible economic areas within our community. Uh, I attended my first chamber of commerce meeting today, uh, via telephone. In which, um, a networking, uh, event was discussed. And an AED program for defibrillators, um, were discussed. And finally, today councillor Owens and I entertained students from Assumption School. And honestly, it's just a pure joy to have them tour our facilities here at the town hall. And I hope to welcome more classes from the area schools in the future. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for indulging me. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Mayor moved by councillor Vlad Shaba, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of the council be received.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous. Uh, yes, we will. See, uh, there's no in, uh, additional information. At this time, we'll take about a ten-minute recess before closed session. Okay, so we're gonna read the motion to move into close session.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Vlad Shaba. Be resolved that council adjourned in camera pursuant to section two thirty nine two of the municipal Act two thousand and one amended. To discuss the proposed retaining acquisitions or dispositions of land by the municipal board. And personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. At six fifty nine P M for the following reasons. Item thirteen point one, request purchase thirty one, thirty three and thirty five government rule west. Item thirteen point two, request purchase thirty seven, forty one, forty three and forty five government road west. And item thirteen point three, appointments to the Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation Board of Directors. And item thirteen point four, request purchase part of sixty five, sorry, sixty nine, uh, and seventy three Brant Street.
All in favor? No opposed, motion carried. Motion to move from closed session was read.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Vlad Shaba, be it resolved that council reconvene in open session at seven.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried. Item number fourteen point, uh, matters from closed session. Item fourteen point one, Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation Board of Directors appointments. Uh, did anybody have any conflicts for matters in closed? None noted. No problem. That's a new thing. Okay, so item fourteen point one, Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation Board of Directors appointments, Madam Clerk?
Moved by councillor, uh, Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three D E V zero zero five. Entitled Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation Board of Directors appointment be received. And then, and finally, that council appoint the following administration and members. Council to the board of directors of the Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six annual council. Chief administrative officer Alan Smith and mayor Stacy Wade, councillor Don Dees.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried. And item fourteen point two, request to purchase of sixty nine and seventy three Brant Street update.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Vlad Shaba, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty three D E V zero zero six. Entitled request to purchase part of sixty nine and seventy three Brant Street update be received. And the council declared sixty nine and seventy three Brant Street a surplus one. And the council approved the sale of one for the south parts of sixty nine and seventy three Brant Street to Ted and Kim Komba for a price of two dollars. Uh, per square foot. And then council authorized mayor municipal clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, the council authorized the bylaw of the sale of the property to give them three rings at an upcoming meeting.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number fifteen point one.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read first, second and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty three zero zero seven, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? Carried unanimous. Adfirmment?
Moved by councillor Vlad Shaba, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be it resolved that this regular, uh, meeting of council be now adjourned at seven fifteen P M.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimous.